It's how it can grow. And this meeting will be recorded as you might hear an announcement shortly via Zoom, so just beware of that. Will you please rise by invitation by Councilor Rippe?
Lord, we thank you so much for today, for this opportunity that we have to all gather on a slightly warmer day in January. And Lord, especially for the privilege that we all share of living in this incredible town. Uh, thank you, Lord, for each of us that make this community what it is. And I pray that you guide us and um lead us to help us uh think the best way we possibly can for everybody who lives here. And we ask you to bless this meeting and and our time together tonight and as we go into the week ahead. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. On vacation. Thank you. You may be seated. And now Secretary, all of your job for you today, we have hundred percent of counselors, the mayor and the junior council. All right. And now for council, I have a motion uh for approval of the full concession of them down.
Mr. Hudson, I make a motion to approve the second agenda for the February third twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Stephanie. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have uh hosted by Counselors Paul and Littlefield for approval of meeting minutes of January sixth and January twenty first, regular council and work session minutes, as well as the approval of regular bills for the month of January and the returning bills for February. Uh, are there any necessary changes to the minutes? Okay, Karen, no one in favor of that motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Thank you. All say that passes and. We will keep presentations.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Um, we're off to a great start for Saturday. I think that's a really enthusiastic start already in the year. Um, as I mentioned at my last one, I know in this January that we welcome six new board members. Um, and as our first meeting in January, we elected um our president, who is Kylie Harrington from Remax Reliance. Uh Bailey, uh she's our resident, uh Bailey Pratt from Locker Insurance is our new secretary. And Stephanie Cross, who is a longtime Sauterton resident, is our treasurer. So I'm really happy to have them as our executive board. Um, for economic development, our first meeting in January brought actually a lot of people out. Um, we invite others to join that just that even aren't on the board. So a lot of people were there. Hope Wilson is the owner of Kylie Mystical Creations. She is actually the new chairperson for that committee. And um we decided to this year be a little proactive in some of our stuff for the big businesses. We created a bunch of handouts that we're going to be handing to all the big business owners when we go out and visit them. And we've decided that we're aside from just myself going out to visit, we're going to have every board member visit at least two businesses a month as well. And then we're really gonna cover ground, talk to businesses, have this paperwork with them and link back for our website, which is actually being revamped as well. Um, so everything is up to date and people can go there and you know, learn about us, see what's there for them. Uh, all the events that we have. And we really think that this is a good way um for the community owners to like meet each other and meet us as well. Our first ribbon cutting is already planned for next Tuesday, February eleventh at eleven AM. This will be for Broad Street Italian Cuisine and Pizza, which isn't new, but they are under new ownership. So we are welcoming um Giovanni Vaseglio and his into town. Um, so we're gonna have that. Everyone's invited to join us for that. Our first business bikes event is on the schedule for Monday, February twenty fourth at five o'clock. That's gonna be held at Grass Collar inside their newly uh heated headspace. We hear the tigers are going in shortly. Um, so we will have a couple guests from Quakertown National Bank there to discuss cyber fraud and cybersecurity, especially how it relates to small businesses in this town. So we're looking forward to having them there, give a talk, have some light food and beverages and and I don't know. We have already also awarded the first facade grant for twenty twenty five. That goes to I Curious Atelier, the art um gallery at the top of Main Street in Broad. There we have approved work to cover the external staircase on the one side of the building at the parking lot. And this year we decided to ask the three recipients from last year's facade grant to help in reviewing all the applications that come in this year and then present that to Sauterton Connect's boards. So this allows for even further positive business to business interactions um between everybody in town. We have decided because we also have a new board member who is a teacher at the high school, Amanda DeMoli, that we are going to be doing a lot with the students at the high school in this spring. We are talking about doing some street cleanup efforts, which we will be coordinating obviously in your office and everything. But to bring the kids out, maybe um to pick up trash and things like that. Um, it gets them out and we coordinating uh, you know, within the community. We've also discussed ideas to partner with their high school Red Alert TV station students um to work on some local social media videos for the businesses. This will give the students volunteer hours, of course, if they need, especially the juniors and the seniors. Bring them into local business community to work with the businesses. And in return, we provide exposure for the businesses. So it's a win-win for everybody. Um, our beautification committee, um, we have notified them that the artwork submission that they submitted was turned down for the utility box at Maine and Reliance. And our next meeting is next Tuesday, so we'll actually be talking more about this at our next meeting. And I'll have more information to follow up on that. And then, of course, we'll keep everyone on council updated for the for the future. And last but not least, sorry, I know it's loud. Um, really enthusiastic. Um, the events registration for both for Friday, which has been open for about two weeks. And then this past Saturday, we opened Art Jam online. So that is all live on our website. People can go, already talking to a lot of people, bands or baby books for both, actually, for Art Jam as well. I had some conversations today. So we're really hoping for that to bring in more artists this year, allowing more time because we realized last year and the year before, frankly, we just didn't have a long enough registration period. So we're hoping to have a lot of those things really booked before the event season starts. So um, if you know of anybody, just send them to our website or to me. Any questions?
When is Art Jam?
Art Jam is the last Saturday of September, so the twenty seventh, ten o'clock to five PM.
A few years ago, when when this council first formed, we something you mentioned was having uh people come to that's visit all the business. And we we tried something similar, like via the economic development committee and we spread love through the councils. We tried to also get every other business. Now, that was before it became a board and we were trying to share the message of of the bid. And we also added uh the church of them on profits. But it's invaluable because when you have that personal reach out, I'm sure you'll get more feedback than you require.
And that's what we want to.
Personal touch is really important.
Exactly.
Guys are doing that.
That's what we wanna do is we we asked for all those surveys last year. I got such a small percentage back. And we feel like if we really take that into there and ask those people those questions.
Right.
Face to face, they're gonna answer. So we'll get some feedback.
And you guys have come a long way, but also the messaging on why, you know, why they're participating in that. You know, proving just that uh, yeah, we we try to support you guys on that. I think there was some success, but this has gone on and on and on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Uh, Penny.
Penny Price, and I'm representing the library. Uh, so February is Love Your Library Month. And we kicked off the month with the wine tasting event on Saturday evening. It was very well attended and a lot of fun. I was there. Helping to pour. Uh, there's an ongoing great sweet white debate that I think is still unresolved. Quite an interesting and sweet whites versus the dry reds. Keep that going. Uh, but I mostly wanted to uh point out that uh this coming Saturday, February eighth, from ten to two, is the mini golf event. That's a family event with a mini golf stations throughout the library that happens every year. And it's very, very popular. So if you have any young kids in your family, uh, that's a great thing to to stop by and and participate in. Totally free, uh, open for the community, um, mini golf of the library. And then what I thought I hadn't done in a while was talk about some of the new services that we offer at the library. And I'll just really quickly mention that um it within the last year, the library purchased a subscription to Consumer Reports that's available available to everybody. So if you're buying a snow blower or a lawnmower or whatever, you can use a library to to reference Consumer Reports without having to buy a whole subscription yourself. So that's a really great resource. Um, we also have and have had for a while, the museum passes. I took a look at it today. There's nineteen different local institutions that you can get a museum pass for. They're mostly museums and local gardens, but if you're planning a a day trip, um, that's a really good resource for library cardholders. And the last thing I'll mention is the Library of Things. Um, that's relatively new, but it's it's objects and and youthful things, everything from baking pans to I saw I looked at it again today. There's a metal detector in there, something you might not wanna buy, but may have a need to use. Uh, pressure wa- uh, pressure washer. I think that might be one of the most frequently borrowed things in the Library of Things. Uh, there's a telescope. And then I also saw they have a a mini projector and a screen. So if anybody is watching a big game this weekend and wanted to maybe broadcast it in another room, that might be an option to do. Any question for me?
Just a uh, I'll put it another dip for you. For those of you that are likely, I like those a lot of audiobooks, but if you use an app like Levy, then you can link your library card to that and you can borrow either readable versions. I think you could do the uh, the Consumer Reports and magazines.
Yep, you can do that virtually.
Or audiobooks. It's a really, really great uh resource. Yeah. Any other question for Penny?
But you're a good listener.
There is danger. Like when I listen to the audiobooks, I feel like I'm watching a movie. So sometimes I'll drive a hundred miles and be like, where, where? So that guy drive, you know, he's not drunk. He's just listening.
Good story.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Are there any other presentations or? All right, great. We'll move on to administrative reports then. Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, Julie's gonna take some of the other reports while I try to get through this uh briefly. That um, we lost a pillar of the community this weekend very suddenly. And uh, John and Anne Marie Hyde Garden just accepted recently a key to the borough for their work in the email ministry, which to date has raised or distributed seven hundred and fifty thousand free meals to people who need in Sauterton. And uh, Anne Marie passed away extremely suddenly on Saturday night or Saturday morning, Friday night, Saturday morning. So I thought a moment of silence might be appropriate. Brian, Bernie.
Okay, so Mary from the um auxiliary dropped off some flyers. We have two events coming up. Sportsman's Day on March first, that's at the Firehouse. Um, I've never been to one of these, so it looks interesting. It's a cash, a bingo, a raffle. Um, you can go to um, I'll leave this up here if anybody wants to see after the um, the meeting. They're available for purchase through Amanda. Um, let's see. Firearm or cash rifles. There's a meat meat wheel. That sounds pretty cool. Oh, Yeti coolers. There's a lot on this list. So anyone's interested, come up. Oh, yeah, all right. So fifty fifty raffle, twelve meat wheel spins, gun and seat. Blackstone, two burn girl, Yeti cooler with meat package, Yeti cooler and two ramblers. And then there's a bunch of guns. So and they're listed pretty pricey. So you have a big chance of winning. I'll keep it up here. And the second event is Wednesday, March nineteenth, the celebration of Women's History Month. The Sauterton Telford Business Professional Women, that's another group in our town, is sponsoring Linda Kenyon portraying Eleanor Roosevelt. That felt really fun. So it's March nineteenth of sixth at Generations. Uh, there's a snow date, um, March twentieth, because we all know what March is like. And you it's free and you just need to RSVP uh, your name and your phone number to the an email address at the front there. So if anybody needs it after the meeting, just come up and I'll talk to you. And they're taking non-perishable canned goods uh, if you'd like to make a donation. So thanks.
Very good, Julie. Thank. Good Julie has. I got fired from those duties for poor performance. It's not. Okay, that ends the mayor's report then, and we'll move forward to chief, please. The chief.
Uh, second, the mayor said, literally my second day here, they keep managing themselves on the treadmill. And so that is a big loss for me. Uh, I might somebody to sit down. Uh, I read council of the court, yeah, receipt of my report, but I'm voting late today. We had six hundred and thirty five calls for lunch. We're running two off from last year, so we're very consistent. Hundred forty four traffic stops, thirty six of the condition, five arrests, hundred and eight public service call, and we suspended other eighty two times. Uh, we're still good weeks in the afternoon for pen and midnight. Um, our part one crimes, which are our more serious crimes, we have five of this hearing, and our minor ones, we have thirteen. I had provided for my annual twenty twenty four report, uh, Rich Todd, Thorville, Public and Police Department. Uh, one correction we made of the goals we had listed, two we didn't achieve. Um, however, since publishing the report, we have now achieved uh in that we hired the officer of Senator D Academy uh at Costa de Burro, and we were eligible to put it for a grant to pay for seventy-five percent on the academy and forty-five percent in salary, which we were awarded. Uh, so we got it. It'll be within the next thirty days while they're coming back, we refer a call for. Uh, so that was, now we're down to one goal we did achieve, I'll work on that now. Um, just our policy for one more to go. Uh, I was very honored uh that I got to speak with Chief Martin and Corporal Adams from Telford at the River Beach uh two weeks ago. Uh, they wanted to, had some very great questions for all three of us, uh, and our answers were very consistent. We didn't even rehearse. Uh, which was actually a really nice thing. Uh, they asked us, what's the biggest change we've seen in law enforcement? Maybe feel very old, current act, a lot. Um, and all three of them had the same answer. It was people, uh, the good people. So we didn't rehearse. It's very impactful. Uh, followers, right? Uh, I would like to thank Public Works for the great job they've been doing with the weather and our community members. We only had six crashes in January, uh, and one of them moved DUI, so that's really, I'll count that. Um, but the fact that people have been driving very safely, it's a lot to us. Appreciate it. Thank you. Um, and speaking of that, with with Sunday, kind of the DM or something. Um, we're asking everybody to uh careful and don't drink, please don't thrive, the clothes, or stall brands, sale, whatever. Uh, and that is all I have. One, two, three, question, three.
Questions for chief? Thank you, sir. Hey, we need to see this. This is called other person.
Yeah, probably not a town, less far less, so I didn't get my report completely, but we'll have a full work session. I'll just touch, as the chief said, we were out the block for snow. We had uh my unofficial number is ten, she was snowing over seven, I bet. Uh, we had brought in already a two hundred sun and salt and we're right back to where we started, to where we were to basically throw about two hundred pounds of salt, you know, leave the seven event. And you're getting ready to bring more solid in, or some other stuff coming up around here. Um, we can talk about the earth stock later for bringing that up here with the salt. And it's um, pretty, pretty sure. But if they're all you know, it's there, it's here, it's the same as the two years before, the five hours. They don't solve.
Yeah, it wasn't that real, I'm saying, did you guys saw today?
We can try to date. Uh, I think we're moving, we were paid last night. We weren't last night. Uh, I didn't even know. I came back from Ducking Beach. I didn't even look outside and true call. But hey, these guys coming out of salt, that's really good smell. I didn't agree with.
Exactly. I was surprised of.
Yeah, we did a little.
Okay. Any question for Steve? Thank you, sir. And we'll move on to Mr. Trump.
Yes, thank you. I've submitted my reports to council. Uh, just two things I'd like to point out. Uh, I'm just two or three. And then for uh, a marketing with Sarah, one, two big specifications for the sort of uh, creative facility. One is for chemicals and the other is for the uh, the sludge dismissal uh, for the facility. Um, that it's, the next thing is the uh, uniform action. It's on your agenda with the value for action, the whole price advertisement. Um, two of the main uh, changes in that in that ordinance is the investing schedule. That's the first one. It's um, for some reason, anyone that says right now, anyone after higher than twenty sixteen, you don't invest for twenty-five years. Uh, this one, it's more correct. That's it's ten years, just another. And then there's a change to the whole uh provisions in that uh, ordinance as well. Uh, right now, it's going to worry if changes are being permitted or not being. So that's all I have for right now. Any question, woman?
Any question? We'll hold any petitions for the motion. I can confirm this. Thank you, sir.
Uh, well, first item is that you're superior. Thank you. Uh, thank you for Steve, for getting on. Jeezy Sheriff, um, it was much harder than it sure been, right, it's working. Um, friendships have been advertised to go on sale March first. Um, they're loaded and directed. We had help um, over the window breach to reload all the borough addresses and direct that. So it'll be a little bit of a different experience. Um, people will have to like request an account. They'll be able to go in and buy them to um, hopefully going to reduce some staff hours for us and some pay. Um, the interview for new discounts this year, um, the recreation committee authorized discount for first responders, um, our borough staff and then um, our swim team family, who present cover. So we're excited about that. Um, it was like one of our most popular Facebook posts. I would get on. We're not well, we're excited to be starting in on some cool season. Um, we also have begun the process of hiring for seasonal summer staff, usually DC. Uh, our vibrant going out soon. It seemed a little bit early, but Branglin's major street will have extra time. And so we started back. Um, our first newsletter, uh, we've actually received the second proof. So we are moving really well on that and it should be ready to go out. Um, if not on time earlier than what we anticipated, the response and advertising was incredible. Um, our local businesses really stepped up and and advertised with us, which is really spectacular. And that will help us to be able to continue doing newsletter. Waiting for our staff for tomorrow, our office staff will begin learning the new billing and accounting software. Um, we expect to be live with that in March. Um, we'll continue kind of communicating with the public about this being opportunities for auto pay, each each transactions and all of that fun stuff that will hopefully make life a little bit easier for those that forget to see their bill. Um, so we are definitely super excited to get off of our anticipated system that we have now and uh, the company that we're working with has been, they're out tomorrow and Thursday to start the process. And then we'll continue from there while everyone is ready. Um, Christine and I are working through our miscellaneous like agreements and contracts and speeding some things up. Uh, last week was meeting with the copier service. Um, and we've actually been able to find ways to cut costs and you know, for so we're getting a new copier, which is very exciting for us. Well, we're seeing things while we do it, which is awesome. So we're continuing to kind of whittle through those things. And it doesn't seem like a lot, but if you can touch number one off the copier bill, it's worth still cutting some. So we've been able to achieve that on a couple of these like smaller agreements. Um, I've begun doing preliminary preparations for our fee contract negotiation, doing reference, got up to lean and we'll start talking about past year and the next several so. Um, and that was Tyler from Lee Florida this morning, and we are working on a grant application for him again, which is through smaller sewer at the sea level. That will be days. Um, those are for projects to be thirty thousand and five hundred thousand. It's not like a lot of money, but it's too rare and it's not not a lot. So we're looking at some smaller opportunities that we can apply for. Um, Christine's also looking at some recreation rentals. Oh, for cameras at the pool, we received pricing this week uh, or last week for upgrading our camera system. The pool um, needs some significant upgrade in what we have there. So Christine's looking at your opportunities for that. Um, we received a reasonable quote, like it's literally twenty fifteen. So it's a little bit out of scope for addition, but it will be to elaborate some of the incidents. Get the project to offer.
Any questions for Sal? Right along. Let me, this wouldn't comment for the public. You'll hear a theme and pretty much here in every every update that you hear from all of the departments, but the priorities this year for us are in the name of sta- stabilizing continuous improvement. And you'll hear uh, Sarah mentioned several, chief mentioned a few. Uh, financial, the financial acumen, doing deep dives on the financials and Sarah's doing a wonderful uh job of that. And the second is uh, the reason I say stabilize is because we, as you guys know, we're going through a lot of transition. I mean, we lost our uh manager that had been here over forty years. We have a couple of key requirements this year. We had a couple last year. And so keeping the staff uh going, training, uh, develop. Uh, we're doubling down on all of those things. So Sarah really has her hands full, but she's doing an impeccable job uh right out of the box. And we're really excited about what we'll accomplish this this year with really two simple goals.
Sure.
Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening?
Probably they've been met. That was good. I had step one, you know, so so we met. Um, I don't think there was was much to report out from there, but um, I'll have some stuff for work session uh along the way to uh ordinance review, but I look forward to sharing with everyone.
You're choking it a bit.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll stand by a year in the making. Are there any others? I have none for executive committee.
At when does that mean? That's it.
It's here the next week, but it'll be that else.
Oh.
That's it. All right, there are a lot of, so we'll move on to public comment. So if you are a borough resident, property owner, uh, or a business owner in the borough, we'd love to hear from you. Please step up to the podium, tell us your name and address and purpose of your comment. Come on, Mike, we were on world record pace for that.
Michael Pike, five seventy, you can't feel that. And let's put this under the uh category of continuously proofing.
Okay, great.
How's that? Around the time that the two point five mil tax increase, an eye popping thirty-seven point six percent increase, went into effect with the twenty twenty-four tax bill, residents were told that a primary purpose of the tax increase was to increase the reserves in the borough's rainy day funds. As a taxpayer and long-term resident of Sauterton Borough, I have some questions about the rainy day fund. Was a portion of the two point five mil increase earmarked for the rainy day fund? If so, how much? Has Borough Council agreed on the target balance for this fund? If so, what is that target? Are there plans to repeal the portion of the tax earmarked for building the rainy day fund when that target has been reached? Will Borough Council commit to clearly and explicitly indicating when money from this fund is to be used? Has there been any discussion on appropriate and or inappropriate reasons to draw from this fund? If so, can the results of these discussions be shared? I'm confident that many of the borough's taxpayers would welcome answers to these various questions and would appreciate the commitment to transparency that those answers will demonstrate. Finally, if the capital reserve fund is the rainy day fund, then it would be helpful if statements by borough officials were would refer to the capital reserve fund and retire the use of the term rainy day fund. Then it would be helpful if statements by borough officials were would refer to the capital reserve fund and retire the use of the term rainy day fund. Thank you.
If you submit that by email to one of us, we'd be glad.
Excellent. Thank you for your time.
Well, one more thing.
Little birds.
Good evening, Borough Council. My name is Adam Rich and I live at fifty five North School Lane. Which is a part of Highview at Sauterton Townhome Community. Came here tonight to address some issues that we have plagued our community. Since it was established roughly ten years ago. These issues primarily are associated with the developer buying grant of select properties. Our community from the beginning. Was very mismanaged. By Century Property Management. Who quite frankly was incompetent and very unprofessional to handle such a responsibility when it came when I came to be a part of the board. Under the developer's leadership and centuries Century Property Management's handling, who is directly tied to the developer of our community. I became immediately immediately responsible for overcoming a more than two twenty thousand dollar deficit in our budget. Just to get us out of debt. To our property management company. This was largely due to the fact that the HOA fee was never increased to the to account for the growing size of the community and left a ninety three dollar. And and was left at ninety three dollars to continue to attract buyers. We recently found that we needed need to address. A thirty thousand dollar deficit year over year for the next four years to overcome replacement costs associated with upkeep of the homes. In the community due to the lack of funding provided to our reserve account. This will put our community at a three hundred twenty plus dollar HOA fee by twenty twenty eight, unless the board imposes a fifteen hundred dollar special assessment. On the homeowners. Fast forward to present day, we now have hired a professional and competent property management company that is willing to work with us. They have since identified several issues that I would like to address. Lack of signage within the community. Since this community was established, there has not other than stop signs. No other signage has been installed. There are no speed limit signs signs to protect the community, to protect the people within our community as they walk. And drive on the roads. Parking signs just this weekend. Through today, there were vehicles and now a single vehicle still parked at the entrance of Highview at Sauterton. From North School Lane onto Market Street. This car is parked too close to the turn, which could potentially result in an accident. However, as the police officer that. Came today had advised, there's nothing they can do from their end because there is no such signage. Indicating it is illegal to indicating it is not illegal to do so. Street lights. As the second. All eighty eight townhomes have now been completed. However, none of the parking lights on Lina Pete Lane are functional. And have never and have never been. There are also quite a few lampposts on Market and Indian Field Lane that have never been in operation either. Again, these provide a safety hazard while walking the sidewalks as well as a security risk because there is no lighting. How were these punch list items able to be proved? Private roads as the third. Being that all the interior roads within the community are the responsibility of Highview at Sauterton and not dedicated as a part of Sauterton Borough. There is an increasing amount of traffic along Market Street of which we are not. Able to regulate ours go in and out of the community by using the various roads as cut throughs. If gating our community is not possible, then at a minimum, the installation of speed humps is very necessary. I know this is not a part of the development development plan and would. Therefore be an undue and is also an undue burden of the community to have us install. Fourth, commercial and mixed use properties. We have sought legal help to work through challenges associated with the only commercial property we have within the community right now, which is Dollar General. They have not been contributing the amount imposed upon them by Century. Property management for the upkeep of their property. Evidently. They. Made an agreement with Brian Grant for five hundred five hundred dollars as their monthly assessment for the length of their lease. It is unclear as to why the commercial space. Is intermingled with Highview at Sauterton when clearly the area was split into two communities. Highview at Sauterton and Towngate Commons. It is unfair to the homeowners of Highview at Sauterton to be responsible for the commercial side. Upkeep, not to mention all the other facilities that Sauterton Borough wanted the community to have, such as a park, an amphitheater, et cetera. Special and special walkways. This will also require extra insurance and undue costs and maintenance by Highview at Sauterton. Our property management company has reached out to select properties on numerous occasions, specifically. Directly to Brian Grant, many times. Receiving no reply. He obviously has no regard for us within the community and this is just a project for him just to make money. We are the people of Sauterton and this is where we are choosing to invest our future. These are our lives. My opinion, as one of the original homeowners, having stated the above, which are just some. Some of the ongoing issue. This makes Highview at Sauterton a horrible location to move into. And due to the economic climate, more or less forces us just to endure. The other board members, there there. There are. There are board, there have been board members that I have reached out to. Several times with their resolve, but two big questions after having said all that is how can or will. Borough Council help us address these issues and is there someone that we can consult to get them resolved? Or that can hold the development developer accountable for doing what is right by our community? Thank you for listening.
I have one question and you brought up a lot of detail. We won't comment or debate that tonight. Are you representing yourself or are you in official capacity from the HLA?
I'm the president of the HOA. Yes. So I'm I'm speaking on behalf of the HOA as the president of the HOA. Sorry, I didn't try to put that in. I was recently elected because what what happened. The the board, we were under under. Either time or capacity to which the developer had to vacate their their board seat. And when that happened, two other homeowners came onto the board and we had a special election to see who was in what position.
Sarah, there were a few of us from council that had brokered a meeting with your former president. That's why that's why I add that to you. And we brought Christopher Grant to the table as well. We won't comment on the particulars, but you mentioned a couple of things. From a borough perspective, we're glad to revisit the original development. Development agreement to see. Which things we may or may not have been responsible for and supported, but a lot of those things are clearly in. Delineated as HOA responsibility, but we'll take it offline and I'll be glad to.
If you'd like this, I can.
Yeah, sure.
All right, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Karen Dunn, I close the public comment session and we'll move forward to the business of the evening. Okay, I think the first is obvious and. Sarah already gave us information. So Mr. Quigley has submitted his resignation from the planning commission. Which will open up that vacancy. So we have a motion to accept the resignation.
Mr. President, I make a motion to accept resignation of Chris Quigley from the planning commission.
How's that going?
Yeah, motion by councillors Shally and London. To accept show criticals of the commission. With an effective date of today. All favor please say aye. Aye aye. You close? Okay, that's it. We resign and. Sarah, now we'll move forward to. Or thank you, John, for the non-dual protection plan.
I know you introduced it a little bit, but.
Yeah, I give you a little background on it. Just you talked about this, I think, last year or some time. And some of the provisions that were granted that time. On compensation in the borough action. So what you have for you, we've been reviewed by. Very conjunction from Sarah. She learned, I always recommended all of these changes that are outlined. So that background. For any question, but it comes to that.
And questions for this listener? Maybe, John, one clarification. This. Employees before the state are grandfathered on their turn.
Yes, so they're entitled to. Or even the R and L, they'll keep receiving those. So. Yeah, so it's really for everyone that's hired. March first. Our issue.
Thanks, Grandpa. All right, now a motion for.
Sir President, I make a motion to authorize the advertisement of ordinance. Twenty twenty five dash D thirteen dash zero one.
What's that? Have motions by councillor Littlefield and Shally. Offered down of the non-dual financial coordinates. Twenty twenty five D thirteen dash zero one. Are there any additional comments, questions or concerns? I mean, none in all favor please say aye. Aye aye, you close? That's all pleading gentlemen. And next we have. Designation. Any comment? All right, then let me have a motion to accept Mr. Poise. The prime code enforcement officer.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Poise enforcement officer Troy at the March seventh.
All second. Hey, a motion by councillor Holland Rogers to accept. Stephen Poise. Presentation in fact, the March seventh, twenty ten. Any comments, questions, references?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. If you didn't say that, yeah, so we'll we'll have that return, you know, we got a whole. Month versus. Celebration. And more to follow. Thank you, sir. Okay, all in favor of that, I'll bring you all. Aye aye, close? All right.
So you're trying to be the proposal, being a your council package from Poise inspection incorporated. Under company of four films, we need other reasons to put them for the last ten years. We need supplement in our good. Or our building inspection for commercial examples and then in the options of Mr. Poise. With his resignation, his retirement. And he's cutting back his hours over the next month. I want to pass on in the. So that there is no lapses or error. So my proposal at this point and the proposal that's in front of me would see that. Those inspections just picked up where Steve is leaving off. So they would step in and do essentially everything that they were that Steve was doing in terms of inspection. Port of works, things rentals. Steve will have offered to be true or lateral, so they will do those for us. But anything that needs to come into the office, they would pick up. From that point, once we get our feet under us. He can evaluate how we want to do the best. So nothing that we're signing up for in this proposal is permanent. It's just. A stop gap until we evaluate what we want to do next to how it's going to be and how it's going forward. But then keep up operations, we're totally into it.
Great. And did you think definitely put rental and stuffy as well? I didn't see that in the proposal. I did.
I didn't talk about it when we met, so I'll double check it. I thought it was easier, but you can verify that.
Okay, you can include that as a modification or a minute.
That we're recommending would allow Sean and I to talk with that major member's predication modification to the proposal. Up in front of you. So I had a couple things with nothing major. I literally got this to try after the game. So I want to give us a chance to make any corrections if we need to, but they are prepared to begin. I assume that later speaker.
I I did take a look at the contract, the agreement. And it's pretty, it's very clear. If you're not happy with them, you can get out. Can't get hurt.
I have a motion of the proposal.
Mr. President, I have a motion to accept the proposal from the inspections, inquiry, modification, clarification or amendments from the borough manager and borough solicitor.
Yeah, motions by councillor Richard and Shally. For the person at the stage is to accept the proposal from choose inspection incorporated. With any modifications by the amendment from the girl manager and solicitor. All favor for that. Aye aye, close? Hey, Sarah, is there any other? Yes, exactly. Okay, thank you. At this time, council will convene to executive session. So. I won't, I won't conclude the meeting. At this time, we'll do a reformat executive session, but just note, we have no objection. Three turn here to council change. So do you have a motion to?
Mr. President, make a motion to convene executive session?